Okay, it's over after seven o'clock, we'll go and then get started, let's call the Johnson City Council meeting. Here we go. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the Johnston City Council meeting number 25-19 to order. Cindy Brokaw, please.
Councilmember Coe?
Here.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Here.
Evans?
Martin.
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have two guests in the audience this evening. I'm going to ask both of them if they'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. George and Jill, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Generally, what I say is I look for the youngest people in the audience, kids that are in elementary school, we don't have any of them, but you still might be the youngest in the audience, so thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mayor and council, there are two changes this evening. First, the applicant has withdrawn the request rezoned property at and near 8605 Valley Parkway, so we respectfully ask that we remove item 5V, which sets a public hearing for October 20th related to that item.
5V?
Yep, as in Victor.
Okay.
And then the second item, 5C and 5M are duplicates, so we request that we remove 5M, which is considered Resolution 25232 for accepting the Northwest Beaver Drive Pump Station Improvements Project.
Counsel, any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to public communications, we have three scheduled public communications this evening. The first is a proclamation proclaiming October is National Community Planning Month. And I think, Rose, you're here to receive that proclamation. And she told me before we walked into the room that I didn't have to read the entire thing word for word. However, I do want to just highlight a couple of the paragraphs in the proclamation itself, and that is, first of all, community planning is critically important for our communities. If we didn't have the involvement of our public officials, our staff, and our electeds, as well as our citizens involved in that process, you know, we wouldn't have the high-quality, good planning that we have in our community. So the purpose of this proclamation, again, is just to recognize October as National Community Planning Month and to call out all of those who do participate in that planning process, including members of the city council, members of our staff, our volunteer members on the Planning and Zoning Commission, on the Board of Adjustment, and others who work with us year-round to make sure that we are doing what we need to do to plan for our community in ways that are safe and appreciated by all of us. So, again, thank you, thank you, Rose, and remind me your name, I'm sorry.
Michael.
Michael. Thank you for all that you do, and I will present the proclamation to you. I don't know if we have anybody, Rose or Michael, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I do not.
Okay.
You didn't plan to say something?
I did.
Well, I'll invite the council to come down. Somebody continue. Okay, moving on to item 5C, our Polk County Supervisor, Jill Alteringer, is in the audience this evening, and she's going to give us an update.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me here tonight. Same, older than you think, already technical difficulties. Thanks for having me here tonight. So when I came to you guys earlier this spring, it was a very full agenda. You guys had come off of a very long workshop, and I had a check, but I kept it very brief, but I like entertained you with a check. No, but I did bring one other visual that I will only bring this time, but I think it's very important to note. So I have been your supervisor since January 2nd, that's approximately 277 days, and I just want to remind everyone my area that I represent, because we go all the way from Urbandale over to Mitchellville and all this area in between. And I think, when you think of Polk County, I don't think you realize how vast it is. And again, I represent the most exciting area, because we are some of the fastest-growing cities with all this economic development and growth. So while the check obviously brings its own sort of excitement, I have a lot of items that we've been working on the last 277 days that I'm really proud of, and I wanted to be able to update you. I feel very odd having an audience behind me, so I just wanted to think I was forgetting about you back there. One of the first things is, am I on TV right now? Is this, oh, it's not being broadcast?
Well, is it being recorded?
It's recording, and then it plays, okay. Well, and that's one thing we have strived to bring to the Polk County government, is easy access to us. So if you tune in to our meetings at 9:35, you can hit the button and stream right in, just as though you're going to watch church service that we all developed the ability to do during COVID, right? And if you can't watch until later that evening, you can find us on an archive. We've made it very easy to access our meetings, and we've put up a page that you can hit right into it. In addition to that, if you wanted to look at the agenda, if you looked at the agenda on January 2nd or before, you would have the agenda. And if you wanted any information on the items on the agenda, you'd have to go to the county auditor's office to ask for them. Again, we've made it very easy to access, we put hyperlinks, you can see all the contracts, resolutions, proposals, proclamations that we're working on, you can get to them easily. We've opened up our board staff in a very similar manner, again, being streamed, being archived, being hyperlinked, but in addition, having many more of them. That's an opportunity where we bring different groups from the community or department heads into the board staff meeting, and we have the opportunity to ask the questions, very similar to what we do in council for workshops, right? But we want to make sure that everyone has access to the information prior to making a vote. Sometimes they don't come forward if it doesn't make sense, but that's part of the open government. Remember, I ran on transparency, accountability, fiscal responsibility, and so these are things that are important to me, and I'm glad to see the changes that we're able to make. For the first time in over 16 years, we lowered the property tax levy. We're looking at all our efficiencies, we're looking at our budget, and we're trying to be the most fiducious we can with our taxpayer money. We are instituting RFPs. Before, it was a lot of friends and family contracts that might have been 20, 25 years old, they just kept renewing them. We're saying, you know what, if there's a new contract up, we're going to RFP it, make sure we're going the right direction. Some of them we're keeping, some of them we're not, but we're trying to make sure that we have all the information in front of us. That's not just a transparency issue, but sometimes you learn new things through that process, right, that you hadn't been thinking of before. We revamped our grant program. That check that I brought last time, we looked at it, we came into the budget cycle and the grant cycle, two big processes at the Polk County level. We went forward with the process as it was set, and as soon as we were done with our first grant cycle, we said, stop, wait, are we doing this correctly? Again, something that hadn't been reviewed for over 20 years, and we just wanted to make sure that we were doing it in the most efficient, effective way possible to reach the citizens and groups, and talk about a great way to learn about all the amazing groups and people involved in our communities. I'm very excited about this one. We just have signed our strategic plan. The county has not had a strategic plan for over 30 years, and I think that that is a great way to set a vision and then budget principles. So we are in the process, we just signed the contract, they're starting down the way. Unfortunately, we won't have it done before the first budget cycle, but we decided it was better to make sure we did it right than to do it fast, and so we are starting through that process. We're trying to be more civic and citizen-centric, and so we moved the election office. You know, I came in there, and we needed at least like one and a half million dollars of renovations to the election office building, and it still was small, inadequate amount of space. You saw the lines for election, it spanned like four or five blocks, people standing in the rain. We said, do we put that type of money here where it doesn't make sense, or do we move it over to River Place where people can park, they can walk inside, and they can have the services that they need? Similarly, we co-aligned with the state for the medical examiner. We estimate that we saved $25 to $37 million straight off the top by not having to build our own facility, plus an ongoing $1 million a year. We're looking for those collaboration areas, again, trying to be good stewards of our taxpayer money. We recently implemented, on September 10th, we had the ribbon cutting for the new kiosk system for the jails. And so this is a way for people that are entering back into the community to, we partnered with St. Vincent de Paul, to have a person that they can talk to with their family about the services they need in order to re-enter into the community. I got the numbers today, we have already served 193 people in that less than one month time. We're updating county policies, so in addition to being conscious of what our citizens are going through, we're conscious of what our employees are going through. We have policies and procedures in our sexual harassment or violence in the workplace policies that haven't been updated for over 20 years. We're making sure that we are keeping our employees safe and that they have a good working environment. So we have been quite busy in the last 277 days. I do appreciate you allowing me the time to come in and talk to you, and wondering if you have any questions for me.
Counsel, have any questions for Supervisor Alteringer?
I didn't see too many eyes lazed over, so hopefully I kept it short enough.
Well, I have to say that, you know, that is a long list.
So I should have shortened it, or should have come sooner?
Well, no, but you were able to share all of that in one breath, so I.
Well, I'm trying to follow on Brownell's system. I mean, did you notice, he was like cyclical breathing, he never took a breath? He's been training me well.
Yeah, well, you're doing a great job, so thank you so much for coming this evening and sharing with us, and keep up the good work.
All right, well, thanks for having me. Have a good night.
The next item on the agenda is the Annual Report of the Library Services for FY25.
Well, Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for giving us the opportunity to explain our report, give you some information. We've given you a four-page report, which is a summary of what's happened this last year, but I would just, I won't read it, but I'd like to highlight a couple of things for you. Probably everybody remembers that a couple of years ago, we had a transition of executive directors at the library, which is usually a rather large change, and I think this is your first full year of our new executive director being there, and we had a remarkable year of success. And before I forget, our executive director is Holly Saleen, who is here to help and answer any questions if need be. In any event, the first year, there was some reorganization in management, which meant some moving of people, job descriptions were redone, tried to make the supervision a little bit more equitable. In essence, we had that kind of change, went through very, very well. We also did some other things in there. Some things we noticed that were important, that had not been addressed in a while, where policies were not up to date, so we've now implemented a system where we regularly review policies. And also, we noticed that strategic plan was not really up to date, so quite similar to Polk County, we pursued strategic planning, although I'm sure we did it better. In any event, the strategic planning was really important for a couple of different reasons. One, we have an older building, and as you can see, that's one of the maintenance concerns. One of the aspects of that strategic plan we came up with, we need to do a study of the building, the systems, to give us some sort of anticipated lifespan for it, what are estimated costs for these kind of things, so we can start planning for the next five years, as opposed to, oops, the HVAC is not working right now. So those kind of things were very, very important parts of it. We also included in that study will probably be a space utilization study, so that we know if we're using all the library facilities in the best way. There may be new uses, there may be new security, there may be all sorts of new things that we want to look at, but we want them to review it to give us their best opinions of what we should do and what would be best for Johnston. Beyond that facility needs problem, I would just like to say, you know, in summary, is that we've got a really unique and special library here. You know, not only does it do the traditional library information resources, we have the people that will help you find answers to questions if you have questions. We do that very, very well, but in addition to that, we teach people how to find, how to use their computers, how to use the new technologies, all of these different services that fit us into the community and help different populations with different needs. Probably the most important and exciting thing that I see there is our youth programs, which all our programs are growing, but the youth programs, to me, getting them introduced and regularly coming to a library is phenomenal. It's just something that's, everybody should be proud of, and those programs are growing, and all our programs are going to just follow whatever needs the people bring up. And so we have a unique opportunity here, a unique system, and if you read our strategic plan and what the input was, is that our staff and our volunteers really make the difference. That's what really makes it special, and in our strategic plan, we're going to emphasize, you know, reinforcing their continued participation and things to make them better suited to handle library changes and the needs that Johnston will have in the future. They're special people, volunteers, a lot of them, so wonderful things are happening. And welcome any kind of questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
I just, I had a chance to review the annual report, and I thought there's a lot of really positive pieces of information in it. The annual visits number, how that's, you know, looking at from FY 2022 was around 100,000, and then '25 is up to 125,000, really positive in that direction. Your circulation number is a significant increase, by about 50% it looks like, of the downloadable circulation from '22 to '25, so I think those are two good examples of the positive things that are happening. And I just, I had a chance to meet with Holly, I don't know, a couple of months or so ago, and really appreciate the leadership and direction, and I think the positive, her energy that she brings, as well as the strong connection that she has with not only the library board, but also city staff and city elected officials, too. So just, I think the report indicates the positive work that the board and the library are headed in, and just wanted to, you know, I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Just say one thing. A year ago, a little over, I guess, I came here and I just told you guys how excited I was to be a part of Johnston and to serve Johnston. I think I kept using the word giddy. I was giddy happy. A year and however many months left, I'm still giddy. I'm very, very giddy, and I thank you. I thank you for this opportunity to serve Johnston, to serve the community, and to be part of this awesomeness. Thank you.
Well, George and Holly, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for sharing this information. You know, I've been retired from my law practice now for, it'll be three years, it's hard to believe, three years in January. And prior to retiring from my law practice, I didn't have an opportunity to read for leisure. I mean, you can appreciate this, George, you just don't have time for it. So now that I'm in my retirement, I do have time to read for leisure, and I use the library services a lot. You know, I try and read a book a week, and so, you know, I either go to the library or get something online or whatever. So I agree with you, we've got great staff over there, we've got great volunteers over there, and, you know, our community would not appreciate, you know, what's available to them at the library if it wasn't for all of the good people that we have working over there. You used the term, George, that the facility is an older facility now, or an older building in our community, which made me gasp a little bit, because I remember voting on that VON referendum, and it was like the first new building we had in Johnston for many, many, many years. And so the fact that it is aging doesn't mean we're aging, it just means the building's aging.
Correct. You haven't changed in 20-some years, don't worry. But no, the building has seen some usage, and that's good, but it also increases our maintenance costs.
Right, right, and, you know, as good stewards, we need to put the money back into it to maintain it so it can continue to serve our community, so something that we'll have to have to do, so, anyway. Well, I appreciate you being here, and thank you for all of the good report.
Thank you for your continued partnership.
Okay, that was the last scheduled public communication that we had this evening. Do we have anyone in the audience to hear that was, would like to speak to the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is to conduct a public hearing and consider Resolution number 25-238, instituting proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of notes not to exceed $11 million water revenue capital loan notes for the CIWW asset transfer. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:27. David?
Good evening. This action would authorize the city to move forward with an SRF loan for up to $11 million that would fund the asset buy-in costs that are due to CIWW as of January 1st as part of our 28E agreement for Central Iowa Water Works. So this is the first procedural step. PFM will assist us in closing the loan following this prior to that January 1st date. So we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, have any questions?
Dave, I do, and I must admit, it may be built into one of the documents that you have presented before us or given us in advance, and I apologize for not seeing it directly. I noticed that there's an attribution of about $408,000 or so of the amount that we would be paying, as indicated as cash on hand. Is that under the water-specific funds?
Yes, it's out of the Water Enterprise one.
Okay.
Yep.
And just out of curiosity, where does that leave us balance-wise?
I will have to follow up with that number, Ms. Sarah, I know that's off the top of my head. I don't think so, we'll get to that number.
Okay.
This was planned for. The intent all along was to pay cash for a portion of this.
That's probably the larger answer that I was looking for, so thank you.
Other questions for David? If not, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:29. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution number 25-238?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Just to reflect, as amended with the removal of those two items, I don't know if we needed to note that or not, but.
Didn't, but we, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, item 7A. Consider second reading of ordinance number 1143, amending ordinance number 487, 733, 790, 847, 953, 997, and 1103, and providing that general property taxes shall no longer be divided on certain property located within Beaver Creek Urban Renewal Area in the city of Johnston, County of Polk, State of Iowa, removing amendment number one, number one area from division of taxes. Josh?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Staff has received no public comment since our first reading. As a refresher, this is removing a TIF area from the Beaver Creek Urban Renewal Area, and this is in order to meet and be in compliance with Iowa code, since we did amend the urban renewal area before, and staff is asking that, in your consideration of the second reading, that you also waive the, consider waiving the third reading this evening to remain in compliance with Polk County deadlines. And I was asked to include a map. Councilwoman Martin said council loves maps, so you have two maps attached this evening. Cindy, would we be able to pull that up?
And just for clarification, Mayor, there aren't enough members to waive the third readings.
Okay, well, then we probably won't do that. Did you hear that, Josh?
I did.
It requires four eyes, and there's only three members here.
Christine, could there be, if there was a special council meeting held, we are considering this week on Wednesday, could the?
Their reading could be at that meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you.
As long as it's noticed.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Any questions?
I was just going to say thank you for including the map, but you already noted the, so it is greatly appreciated. The reference to Glendale Oaks, I know all the staff know exactly where that is, but some of the electeds don't know. So appreciate very much you doing that, and I think that also is helpful for residents, too, to.
Absolutely.
Have transparency standpoint, so.
Any other questions or comments for Josh? Not. Do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1143?
I move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider third and final consideration, adoption and publishing of ordinance number 1141, amending the city of Johnston revised ordinances of 2007 by amending Chapter 99, Sanitary Sewer, Section 99.07, Sewer User Charge.
No changes from second reading and no additional public comment.
Counsel, have any questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve third and final consideration of ordinance number 1142?
I move.
1141. We have a motion?
Second.
Second.
And a second? Further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
Yes.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, consider third and final consideration, adoption and publishing of ordinance number 1142, amending the City of Johnson revised ordinances of 2007 by amending chapter 92 water, section 92.02 rates for service.
I move. Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Cindy, vote please.
Hope?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7D, consider resolution number 25 dash 202, establish the private establishing the private areas to be designated for the 2025-26 urban bow deer hunt. Jeff?
Last month, you guys approved the public hunting map, which designated for areas where we have some hunters that can go. Then we do have private citizens who would like to be able to hunt on their property, usually heavily wooded, you know, backyards and things like that. So there are two residents who would like to be able to hunt in their backyard. So the map has been amended for those two addresses.
And there wasn't any neighbors that had concerns? Any other questions, council? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25 dash 202?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7E. Is this an action item?
Yes.
Okay. Item 7E relates to the FY 2025-26 staffing changes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've had some discussions concerning a number of staffing needs that have been identified that need to be considered for the FY 2026 budget, inclusion in the budget since the budget was approved. And these changes involve changes within the Police Department, the Fire District, and the Administration Department. Just quickly, within the Police Department first, while the department has increased the number of positions within patrol over the last several years, there's really a need to increase the specialty positions, particularly within investigations, given the anticipated timeline between hiring, certification, field training, and in light of the strains in the investigation unit. There's three changes that they're requesting. First is to shift one of the FY 26 police officer positions to FY 27 and then move one of the planned or the planned detective position FY 27 to 26. Second would be to reclassify the current investigation unit sergeant opening as a police lieutenant position. And third would be to reclassify the current field operation division commander, which is a lieutenant position, to a police captain. The the impact for those changes within the Police Department really can all be accommodated within the existing FY 26 budget due to the current vacancies that are within the department and then just realigning existing positions. The the second area affects both the Police Department and the Fire District and really kind of twofolds reason for this change. Since Johnston has become the administrative city for the Fire District, there's been added pressure been placed on staff and technology to support the addition of the Grimes Fire Fire Station along with the additional staff. And then for both the Fire and Police, just the changes in technology has created a broader need to expand capacity for both of those departments. So the request there is to reclassify the existing public safety support specialist as a public safety support manager. That specialist currently is 50/50, 50% Fire, 50% Police. This manager position would be funded 80% Police, 20% Fire, and then create a new public safety support specialist position that would be funded 80% Fire, 20% Police. For the impact for the for the police, again, there is existing funding within the department that can fund that. For the Fire District, this will require an FY 26 budget amendment. Now, that can be funded from reserves from the Fire District fund, but it would also need it would need approval for that new position by the Fire Board. So this is kind of the first step for that particular position, but because we'll need to go to the Fire Board ultimately for that approval, so the City of Grimes can weigh into that. I would note that we've had conversations with City Administrator Anderson from Grimes and it appears that he is supportive of that recommendation. The third is with the upcoming, which is still out over about 15 months from now, a retirement of our Director of Internal Operations and City Clerk. That position currently oversees HR, IT, and City Clerk functions. With that retirement, staff is recommending that we add two positions now to ensure ensure a more smooth transition. This will allow a knowledge transfer to occur before her departure and provide those specialized supports with, you know, to provide specialized support for these increasingly complex areas. So the positions include hiring an HR Director and then hiring an enterprise application and IT Coordinator. The original FY 26 budget did include $172,000 for the Director of Internal Operations City Clerk and $132,000 for City Clerk position. Now, the full year cost and salary benefits for the proposed HR Director and enterprise IT Coordinator are $372,400. So when you include those three positions, there is a total cost of $545,350 or an increase of $240,400 over an entire 12-month calendar period. Knowing that we're going to fill this at the earliest in December, the impact to the budget would be about $140,200. Now, I would note that we did end the fiscal year 2025 general fund with about $1.2 million in surplus. Additionally, Johnston is projected to receive about $900 to $1.2 million returned to us out of the 9/11 fund for the Fire District in FY 26. So those resources will provide us financial flexibility to invest in the restructuring without reducing the overall impact of the budget. So in our our view, this really does provide some targeted needs that we need throughout the organization. So our recommendation is to approve a motion tonight authorizing the addition of the detective position, reclassify the current investigation unit sergeant opening as a police lieutenant, reclassify the current field operation director commander lieutenant as a police captain, reclassify the existing public safety support specialist as a public safety support manager, authorize a new public safety support specialist position, authorize a new human resource director position, and authorize a new enterprise applications and IT coordinator position. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions the council and mayor would have. Thank you.
Council, any questions?
Mayor, I do have one. And and all of you, I know cringe when I grab a calculator, but in.
No, I did.
In a, in your kind of synopsis that's posted as part of the agenda item details, Mike, you did walk through, and I was trying to follow it, the the amount budgeted for FY 2026 for the Director of Internal Operations City Clerk as $172,950 and then the City Clerk position for $132,000, right? So we we have two positions currently budgeted.
Correct.
All right. And the proposal is that we will expend in a full year $372,400 for these two new positions?
Correct.
Okay. And that includes keeping the $132,000 for the City Clerk position?
It does not. So we we would propose not to fill that position.
So that's where I I need the the $240,400 amount is what I need to get to. Can you, can you help me get there?
So if you take the $172,950, that's Director of Internal Operations, plus the $372,400, that equals $545,350. So if you, if you take the $545,350 minus the $304,950, that's a a deficit of 200, or there's a difference of $240,400. So now you take that.
So you're reducing. But you're going to fill in a full budget year, you're still going to fill that Director of Internal Operations City Clerk position?
For a full year, correct.
For a full year?
Correct. Yep.
I'll, I'll quickly pen some more numbers here then.
What I probably did is overstated the the impact of the budget because obviously we we have a City Clerk that we budgeted the full year and we're not. So really, the $140 is going to be less if that's, I think, where you're headed now. It's $240,400. Seven, 12. Yeah, is that $140,200 and we've budgeted.
You you deducted.
So we budgeted $304. The cost of the two new positions for seven months is is really $217,233 plus the $172,950. So that's $3391. So really, our costs are, it's about $85,000. So I overstated this. I overstated because the clerk was playing for 12 months and I really only gave it credit for $712.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure we were on the same page. That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the proposed FY 2025-26 staffing changes?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7F, consider approval claims in the amount of $2,663,504.55.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to City Administrator staff comments. Mike?
Well, I'm going to be, I'm going to continue the theme of strategic plan discussions Just a reminder, I did send an email out late this afternoon. Lyle would like to schedule some time with each of you, the mayor and council, over the next week. So there is a doodle thing. You can just select a time that would work for you and we'll get a Zoom link out to you. So he's looking Wednesday, Friday, or Saturday from 6 to 6 a.m. to 5 p.m. or Thursday, 6 a.m. to 10 p.m. So if there's some, there's one hour blocks, it may not take an hour, but if we can get those scheduled, then we'll send a Zoom link once you do that. If you have any questions, let me know. And there's some questions that he sent out that was included in the email that I sent out this afternoon, so you'll know kind of what he's asking and what he's looking for. Okay?
Anything else?
All I have, staff.
Staff comments? Anything this evening? Why don't we, why don't we do the city council comments before we go into closed session then?
At best, thanks.
A couple of things. First of all, I had an opportunity to participate in and just wanted to appreciate the the electronics recycling effort that went on Saturday, dropped off some stuff from our house and saw that quite a bit of stuff was dropped out. So that's, I think it was something that was pretty, was very beneficial to the residents and so want to thank anybody who was was involved in that. Second of all, last Monday night, the Planning and Zoning Commission met and had a, heard a contentious case around a potential proposed rezoning, which now has been withdrawn. Just wanted to kind of personally thank the staff for their work on what I, what I think was a really challenging proposal and in dealing with the proposal and how it fit with the comprehensive plan. But then obviously feeling in the neighbors neighborhood with with significant and I think legitimate concerns about the proposal. But I also wanted to thank and hope and ask that staff please pass along my appreciation to the work that the P&amp;Z did that evening. This is a very challenging situation that they had to deal with. There was a large crowd, a very rational, reasonable crowd, not, no, 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 nothing inappropriate was said or done or done, which I think anytime that can happen in a public meeting when there's a large crowd today is is an accomplishment. So really appreciate the the work done by the folks there on that. But I thought the P&amp;Z did a really good job of, and I think Chairman Johnson did a very nice job of managing the the discussion. And I thought the board handled the the different decisions that they had to take into account very well. So would appreciate if that, that our appreciation, or at least my appreciation, maybe others as well, could be, could be shared with the Planning and Zoning Commission because I thought they handled that really, really well. I do think that that case presents, and especially, I know there was some discussion about a, some action I think that the council had taken in 2021 around an amendment on the comprehensive plan that we probably need to dig in a little bit to really understand the context of that. So I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to you, Rose, to talk more about about that. But I do think, you know, clearly, as we, anytime there's infill development or development that goes up against existing neighborhoods, that's always going to be challenging. And so figuring out how we can man, try to manage those to, in the best way possible, I think, is something I think we can hopefully work to continue to build from. But I thought the staff did a very good job handling a challenging situation as did the P&amp;Z. So wanted to share those thoughts tonight.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
I'd like to publicly thank the Johnston High School Science and Sustainability Club for walking a portion of Beaver Creek over the weekend and pulling out several tires and a sink and all sorts of trash along the way. And they did an amazing job, but also my, I extend thanks then to Parks because if you haven't already done so, I know you're, have been contacted about cleaning up all the debris that they found along the way, too. So just outstanding that we had some folks and a kind of a different population of folks helping clean up our creek this time around. And it was a lot of fun to see the pictures on Instagram of all their finds, including bones and a snake and everything else. Anyway, without a yield.
Thank you for sharing that because I was driving down 62nd Avenue and I saw a tire and some bags and I thought, what Laos dumped off their garbage on on the side of our roadway so that we'd have to pick it up? But it wasn't. It was, it was our, our youth that that were out doing a good deed and picking up the trash for us. So, so thank you for sharing that. So thank you for sharing that. You know, it's been a long time since we had our last council meeting, and I was just looking at my calendar on all the things that have happened since then. So I'm going to give just a few shout-outs as well. Deputy Chief Ron Shipper, we had the retirement reception for him. It was very well attended, and it was, what are you, there he is. It was, it was really fun to hear a lot of his background and experiences that he's had, all of which relate in one way or another to public service his entire career. So it was, I didn't know all of that about Deputy Chief Shipper, and just made me even more proud of the quality of personnel that we have at the Johnston Grimes Fire District. On Saturday, the National Association of Mentally Ill, NAMI, had their annual walk out at Terra Park. They've been doing it for several years now, always have an incredible turnout. Councilman Reddy was there in attendance to show support also. But I want to thank all of our staff that helped support that, whether it was the Fire Department, or Public Works, or Police, or whomever else was out there helping make sure that that was, that was a huge success for, you know, just a walk for a great cause. Also on Saturday, we had the final, where's Josh at? Josh, there he is. We had the final concert of the summer concert series, the Port Tornados. Again, a huge turnout. I heard afterwards that they can't wait to come back next year. They really like performing on our stage and to our concert goers here in Johnston. So job well done, Josh, and again, everyone else who have a role in making sure that that is very successful. On Tuesday of last week, we had a public meeting pulled together. We put out a notice that we wanted to see who was interested in coming to Crown Point and having a conversation about Green Days and the future of Green Days in our community. Had a larger turnout at that than we expected. A lot of interest in working with the city and others to see if we can't maybe reimagine Green Days and make it something new and different than it has been in the past, but also playing, you know, playing off of the, you know, the original purpose and thoughts behind putting together a Green Days event, recognizing the, you know, the industry that we have in this community that's built around agriculture and the former greenhouses that we had in the community. But good turnout for that, some fair amount of enthusiasm in working to see if we can't continue that going forward. We also had National Coffee with Cops Day, and I think that Panera was probably the safest place in Johnston to be for an hour last Wednesday morning. It was great being able to just stop and visit on a very casual basis with many of the police officers that we have in the community. We've got, we've got a great team there, and it was fun just to have a cup of coffee with them. So those are just a few of the many things that happened since our last council meeting. But again, it just shows how, what a big role all of you play in making this the community that it is. So thank you so much for everything that you do. And then the chief just got back from Kosovo. His first experience in Kosovo. Of course, the purpose behind the meeting was to further develop our relationship with that country and with the citizens of Kosovo, in particular, PEA. But the chief played a real lead role in interacting with the police force in Kosovo, which is a national police force. They aren't, they aren't local like we are. But I think you said it before you went, chief, that we probably have as much to learn from them as they do from us. And so hopefully, I, you know, just from the short description you've already given of the experience that you've had there, I, my impression is you found the trip worthwhile, the interaction with the people there very worthwhile. And it just, it will continue to, our relationships there will continue to grow and, you know, develop into something that is worthwhile for our, for our community and theirs as well. Chief, did you want to add anything?
Just to, I guess, a brief recap. There were five law enforcement officials from the state of Iowa that traveled over along with two members from the National Guard that were recently retired and strong leaders in the Kosovo-Iowa relationship. Next, very worthwhile trip, fantastic, all the way around. Next step is building out an actual memorandum of understanding to be executed between agencies at the state level and municipal level in the state of Iowa to build a collaborative partnership with law enforcement to share training and experiences in policy and procedure and technology and all layers and elements that are modern-day policing. So we'll be working diligently over the next few months behind the scenes to formalize language with our various partners and then bring that forward at some point for a ceremonial signing, hopefully, that'll involve members of law enforcement from the state of Iowa, as well as municipalities that participate in the sister-city relationship. And even beyond that, some of our strong law enforcement agencies throughout the state of Iowa to try to bring them on board with it as well. So very exciting opportunity. Been working on this project for a long, long time, and it appears that we've got a real opportunity here to further experiences and professional development for both us and law enforcement in Kosovo.
Thank you very much. Anything else? If not, we will, we have one agenda item left, and that is a closed session per Iowa Code Section 21.51(c) to discuss strategy with counsel on matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body of that litig- of the governmental body in that litigation. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I move. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed.